And you've got the most recent version of the minutes. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to review those, so this time I'd look for consent, approval of the consent agenda items.
Second.
Thank you Lori, thank you Lorline. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Good, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to recognitions. Dr. Lethem.
I believe Mr. Bruce Loyce.
Okay. Thank you. About, it was a week ago, right Sharon? One of our administrators was recognized as the top dog in what they do in the state. So let me add a little more clarification. The Missouri Council for Career and Tech Administrators, MCCTA, they have their conference, fall conference at the same time as the Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals. That was last Sunday through Tuesday morning. And at the awards luncheon on Monday, they recognize Principals of the Year, Assistant Principals of the Year, and various, and on the MCCTA side, they recognize one person for the Director of the Year. This is 57 career centers, 12 community colleges, and one tech school for, I think that's 70. And Sharon Longen, Director Nichols Career Center, was not, was awarded the Administrator of the Year for Career and Tech Ed Centers. So Sharon, come on up. I can't do a false impression here. This is not, this is what they gave her. And so we have a little, want to do it again, because you know, it's not every day that you're recognized as being one of the best in the state. In the competition, in 70 different facilities, to be recognized by your peers and your staff as one of the best, not only to support for career and tech education, and not just the students and the families, but also her colleagues across the state, to be recognized by your peer group is something special. So I'm gonna say just a couple of things. So 30 years total.
30 years.
Started at, as an elementary.
I started as an elementary teacher.
Fourth grade?
Fourth grade.
And then went to counseling?
Then I went to high school counseling in a comprehensive school.
You tell everyone.
This is how it always works, by the way. At California, I was a comprehensive guidance counselor for the high school, and then had the opportunity to come to Nichols Career Center as a counselor, working with adult programs, financial aid, and also helping with the secondary side. Got my specialist degree in administration, and was fortunate enough to get a position at the high school, JCHS, as an assistant principal for a couple of years. And then had the opportunity to come back across the street to Nichols to be the career director for the past seven years. And one of those, I did a little bit of a jig where I was shuffling two sides of the street, some of you may recall, and that was a bit of a crazy year, but that's when you know when your folks pull together and support not just you personally, but our school, our district, and most importantly, our students. So very, very blessed to have served in all those capacities, so.
I had your resume memorized. I just couldn't say the California part. That goes back to our previous days.
Yes.
Of when I was a sending school administrator, whether I was a sending school administrator to Nichols Career Center, or in my current role the last 16 months, the one thing that I said always held true for Sharon is she made you feel like if she was talking to a student, that that student was the most important student in her program. Or if she was talking to an administrator from a sending school, she made that sending school like they were the most important sending school in the consortium. And same with her instructors, and when you couple that with her motto of right student, right program, for the right reasons, I think keeping it that simplistic and never wavering from that is why you're standing here being recognized. Sharon, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Our second difference maker this month is Stacy Gregory Angel. Please come on. Stacy is our new district literacy trainer this year, and changing her role a bit. She is helping our district fulfill our role of getting 100% of our kids reading at or above grade level. And so what I thought was so neat, and I could stand up here and talk about her all day, but her reading specialists nominated her for this award, because Stacy's going in and not only training principals, she's training teacher groups, but she's also bringing in the reading specialists that she used to be a part of, and then providing them with more training, additional training, but also talking to them about growth mindset, and where we have to maybe make some changes going forward to help our goal, and help us reach our goal. And so they wanted to recognize her for her outstanding professionalism and enthusiasm about reading, and getting everyone on the same page. And so we know she's an incredible blessing and value to our district, and so we wanted to present her with this Difference Maker Award. Stacy?
Stacy. Very nice to stay there. Stacy.
Hello, I'm Angel Edker, Principal at South School, and I am presenting a World Difference Maker Award for Partnerships. So I'd like, first Baptist Church that they were joining, and lots of people here today from First Baptist Church was an amazing, strong partner for us. So this year at South School, we started a new car rider procedure, thanks to our Facilities Department, and it was kind of an all hands on deck to train parents on what that would look like. And so I called Linda, right here, Linda Weisman, and I said, please help me. And she said, I've got this, and she went and recruited people. We had two to three adults from First Baptist every single day for two weeks until we got it down pat, everyone trained, and finally I'm like, we're good. I mean, all of your help stepping in has really helped us. And besides that, First Baptist really has stepped up this year, supporting our attendance efforts. So every month, they are supporting us financially, and it's really helped out. So I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Got my face paper.
Looks great.
Thank you guys.
Good job.
Good evening. Todd Schalls, Principal of Callaway Hills, and I am here to recognize Coach Justin Reynolds. He's our PE coach out at Callaway Hills who was recognized as a difference maker. Unfortunately, he's making a difference now. He's in Wichita, so learning how to bring back some trauma responsive practices into our school, and so he's unable to be here tonight. But I did want to read what one coworker had to say about him as a difference maker. It says that Justin Reynolds is always going above and beyond to help students and staff. And he's a great coworker who puts the needs of others before his own. And Justin is more than willing to help students that may be having a challenging moment, or that might just need a quick check-in. And he's been tremendous friend and coworker by helping this individual reflect and grow during the hard times. And he's helped me transform, he's helped transform the school into a healthy community, and I can't wait to see what he has in mind for the future of Callaway Hills. And so that's what one staff member had to say, and I'll give my own two cents. I mean, this guy is a difference maker. He is somebody that is there all the time. Couple Fridays ago, we're out timed rhubarb for the new equipment going in around our track with flashlights. I mean, it doesn't matter what it is, he just makes it, gets it done. And you know, we have a healthy schools committee, and he leads that up, and we've got a lot of awesome initiatives going on, especially being recognized as a bronze award winner for one of the most healthiest schools, which is in a large part due to what Coach Reynolds does and brings to our school. And so let's give him a round of applause for the great work he's done.
Thank you Todd.
Always get to recognize folks.
Absolutely.
Especially our community partnerships.
Absolutely.
Stronger together. Next item on business tonight, reports and communications. For you, Dr. Lethem.
Yes, and we do have, as you notice on the wall, behind and in front, artwork. And I would just like to recognize here, behind us here in front, is from Moral Heights Elementary. So kudos to them at Moral Heights. And then on the back wall, on the both sides of our JC Reeks poster, Cedar Hill, as far as some of their artwork that's on display. So kudos to our art departments in our schools, and we have a rotation that we want to showcase what our kids are doing. And so I would just want to recognize both of those schools and thank them for what they do. So from that today, our staff professional development, PD Day, as far as with reading, science, some classroom management, some different things in some different areas. Brian may touch on us, our Chief of Learning here in a little bit about that, but that was a great day. I actually was at Dix Road and went through a close reading activity myself personally. Got my own little card here, as far as with the elementary school, as far as their annotations, as far as how they do that. So that was a good experience that I experienced firsthand with that today. We had homecoming activities at the high school last week, a lot of things going on with that. Kelly Services, we are with our, they take care of our substitute teaching as far as coordinating that, and our partnership with the city, as far as wanting a city bus, they have an advertisement on the side of that. So we had a little photo op for that, so we're working with them. Faculty Council started this month. We have a representative from each of our buildings, and I meet with them monthly, and we kind of showcase different parts, but the overall is to inform, and then asking for feedback. And so they go to their buildings, when they go back, and then they get feedback from their folks, and that's been a really good thing. Thanks to Brenda for helping coordinate, facilitate that. It's gone really well. We had National Custodial Worker Appreciation Day, was on October 2nd. Our very own Connie, we recognize here, but all our buildings across the district recognize folks that truly make a difference every day, and they don't do it just to be recognized because that's just what they do. So that was a great thing. Our United Way, we have a great partnership with United Way. There was a game ball presentation, Ann Bax, and Ryan Freeman is the co-chair this year with their fundraising, presented a game ball, Coach Walker presented a game ball to them before the game, so that was great. I was invited to ride along with Sergeant Lacy of the Callaway County Sheriff's Department. And yeah, I was, that was a learning experience, but at the end of the day, ensuring that we have a better feel for what is going on, where our students are coming from, as far as with, so I had an interesting couple hours. I drove, I went along.
Did you drive?
I didn't get to drive. We were driving quicker than I drive on a regular basis.
High speed chase.
High speed chase, yeah.
Oh, awesome.
So it was kind of exciting. Sorry, that went well. And along with that line, I've, without students, I've driven a bus three times, and part of the training for that, and there again, it's just to, we hear about how we can get better with our buses, we can all improve, I can improve, and so I had my third, I've got my fourth one coming this week, so excited about that. We had our coffee with Larry last Friday, had a good turnout, and we had our central office tailgate last Friday. We had a cornhole tournament, I'm not sure, Brian, do you know who won in the finals? His memory's fading, but Gary Bruce Loyce and I faced a team in the finals, so, not that we remember who won or anything, but it was a great team building and barbecue, and had a great day with that. And then we had Simonson Door judging, thanks to Lorline, thanks to Ken, were a part of that, and as far as with their homecoming activities. And their theme wasn't about a certain, it was basically something that inspired them. And there was some tremendous creativity by our students at Simonson that I know Ben Melton very proud of, and just all of our folks, and that was a neat experience to be part of that. So that's kind of some of the things going on in our world. Any questions on any of those?
There you go.
Thank you.
Chief of Learning update, Dr. Schindler.
Okay, as Dr. Lethem said, we did have a full day of PD, and so there are a lot of activities taking place across the district. Just a reminder that this was not a district initiated PD Day, that we have, every building had designed their professional development plan based on the data that they have, and their staff discussing what the PD needs were at the building. So it looked different across the entire district at different buildings. So we had some buildings that were engaging in some follow-up Inspire Science training with those consultants. We had some Active Shooter training going on with some staff. We had some close reading training, some PBIS, and Kagan structures. So PD looked different in all of the sites. It was based on what the staff had decided their needs were earlier in the year. So a lot of good professional development going on. I have, I've been sharing with you some of the literacy components that we have in place, and I've been talking about the fact that when it comes to teaching children to read, it is a very complex process. And so we have a lot of, we talk about, we want 100% of our kids to be reading on grade level. Well, that's just a very simple statement to make, but behind that is an incredible amount of work. And in this month's board packet, I shared with you all of the things that we do to ensure that our kids are reading on grade level. What I'd like to do tonight is take just a few minutes, I'm going to ask Ms. Ross to come up here and share with you, what I want her to share with you are some of the structures we have in place to monitor that, what that looks like in terms of how we're assessing and monitoring those pieces in our professional development, and to kind of add to the conversation. So I'm going to ask if she come up and share a few thoughts with you, and then I'll discuss a literacy card that we've developed.
So if you turn and look that way at the TV, we're going to talk a little bit about our reading update. Whoops. Thank you Jason. We're going to look at three things. We're going to look at how we currently measure performance in the area of reading, and then at a high level, what are we doing differently this year to impact performance in the area of reading? And then what are we doing to develop leaders that will impact the performance in this area? All of these things are the district level literacy cadre that we established last year. These are our areas of focus. So if we talk us a little bit about how we measure performance, there's many different things along the way. Get this slide pulled up. We're going to start with I-Ready, and that's consistent with what we're doing K9 as our level of measurement. This year, what's new at the elementary level, we did away with direct reading inventories, but we started with next step assessment. And so that is a very consistent method of assessing students. We use it across all of our students in grades one through two, twice a year, and then at the end of the year, kindergarten will give this assessment. But it's also able to be given to students in grades three through five who are significantly behind in reading, so that we can drill down even farther. It has more, more areas that we can address than our DRA did previously. So we feel like this is a really good move with us for our assessment piece. Data teams is new this year. The focus at every building K8 is on reading. And so we were taking a look at creating common informative assessments, we're taking a look at diving into our curriculum, knowing what our curriculum is covering, and then how do we reach all of our students with common informatives, so that they are successful and can master those standards by the end of a unit. Running record text level, this has always been around. However, this year, with some of the different models that we have in place, we are going to be giving it to all students grades K through five, and parents will be able to see this on grade cards. So they'll be able to see what a child's text level is in comparison to where they are in a particular quarter, if they're behind, if they're advanced, if they're right where they need to be. And then one thing that we added at the end of the year last year is our spelling, or during the year last year was Words Their Way, and that's given for grades K through two students, helps them drill down into the areas of phonics, phonemic awareness, an area that we definitely had missing prior to that. And we can also use it for grades three through five, but that next step assessment is giving us more detailed information for our older students. So these are all ways that we measure performance, and you see at the top, kindergarten has some very specific measurements that they give and are reported out to parents, along with letter ID, uppercase, lowercase, can they look at a book, can they pick it up, do they know where print is located on the book? They also are giving Words Their Way, and everything listed below sometime during that kindergarten year. This year, one thing that is different for assessment reporting is all of our teachers have a very clear picture of when and what they are going to be giving assessment wise. And so when they're meeting with the reading specialists in the building, or the reading coaches, they know exactly what they should have present in their binders that they are keeping with every student's information, they know exactly where their kids are and what the deficits are. And so we have this out in front of them, so that there's no question of what they need to be compiling. I-Ready reading, as you know, this is, I-Ready assessments used to be given three times a year, we are now going to be giving it four times a year. And so we have the diagnostic and the benchmark testing throughout the year, based on the results and based on the other assessments I already shared with you, each building can assign instructional licenses to the kids that are significantly below, but they also can be significantly ahead if they want it to be. It will place them where they are and build from the skills there. The focus last year was always, are the kids on it at least 45 minutes a week? That was the recommendation. But we have to get past that this year, and really monitoring, are they passing the assignments? You know, it's not going to do them any good if they were given a quiz or working through a lesson, but they don't pass, they have to be given some specific instruction so they can pick up the skill. And then this year, we're really excited, the I-Ready toolbox is new, but teachers in grades K through eight, or K through nine, can get on and take a look at lessons, quizzes, close reading assessments. It is all laid out, and every teacher is able to access grade levels above or grade levels below, and so they're able to differentiate for all the kids. And so that has been really helpful at this point of the year, the teachers are really liking that resource. Last year, at the end of the year, if we were looking at a breakdown between elementary and secondary, we saw that 62.33% of our K through five students on the I-Ready assessment were at or above grade level. And 42.68 of our sixth through ninth grade students were at or above grade level at the end of the year, based on this one assessment. And so of course, our goal this year is to keep that going up and going in the right We also measure kids based on, not only are they at or above grade level, but they are measured, are they making at least a year's worth of progress in a year's period of time at school? And so this was our results last year in grades K through eight, where we see the percent of students that met that growth target, they made at least a year progress in the year that we had them in our classrooms. And so we had some grade levels, grade four, 172% progress toward meeting that target. But if you look down the side, I don't have a laser, but everything that's highlighted in yellow, our goal this year is that we have more students achieving that target. Fourth grade was a good year last year, but we have room to grow in several of our different building grade levels. So those are our Smarckles that we're going to be setting up this year across our district. You want to know what we were doing differently? Some of these things were not, are not brand new, is the method, whoops, sorry Jason, will you slide? It's the method with fidelity that we're putting these things in place. So close reading is our district level strategy that we're putting in place. This year, we have a first grade literacy cadre, and that is our Stacy Gregory and Dr. Julie Shaffer, who are providing training to all of our first grade teachers and principals, very detailed focused training, so that principals know when they go into the classrooms, when they are using a balanced literacy assessment, they know what to look for. They can talk the same talk as teachers, and that's what's very important. We've expanded into the middle school, and so the balanced literacy approach, if it's working in elementary, we need to expand it into ELA, into the middle school level. And so we have Katie Lubring and Sue Starr, that are our reading specialists, that are helping our classroom teachers, along with Dr. Shaffer, and they are working on putting that model approach in place. And so they're working with our below grade level students in sixth grade, our significantly below grade level students, and then next quarter, they will expand that and look more at the guided reading approach. Again, our focus has been on that classroom, curriculum, procedures, and making sure that our teachers are putting these things in place with fidelity. We have 27 reading intervention specialists that are working in our buildings, K through eight, and we have literacy team meetings going on, and then that ongoing PD that we recognized Stacy for tonight. And so we've got some great things going on, and our two lab classrooms opened up this month at K through three, and then grades one through five will open up, we're hoping, in January. And so they will be taking visitors, and that process has already started. Building principals, coaches, and teachers are coming to visit those lab classrooms to see what that model looks like, and so they can replicate it and set goals when they go back to their building. Okay, one of the biggest things that we have going for our teachers, students, parents in this district is our website, and if you have not had a chance to take a look at that, please do. If you'll click on that, this will take you to a plethora of information for our literacy resources, and while, for time's sake, we won't get into a whole bunch of it tonight while it pulls up. It talks about differences in reading levels, and where are, what are the characteristics of a reading level for a particular student? And then as you go across that top row where it says JCPS documents, guided reading resources, lesson plans and notes, if you'll click on lesson plans and notes, Jason, and just pick on one of those. What is nice, that I mentioned a guided reading binder earlier, is that all of our teachers in grades K through five have a lesson plan in front of them that they can fill out for their particular classroom, or for their particular group of students that they're working with that day. It is consistent, the model's laid out, it's given to them, it simplifies the efforts they have to put into it, as long as they know where their students are falling and the characteristics of that particular kind of reader, they know how to fill that out. If you'll go back up and go down to like emergent. This is based on the Jan Richardson model, and we went to Massachusetts, a team of us went this summer, and listened to Jan Richardson give a very comprehensive workshop dealing with her lesson plans. And we came back and promoted, or pushed in our own curriculum expectations into those lesson plans, but it is laid out, if you click on that gray box, there you go. It gives a two-day lesson plan for this particular type of learner. The teachers can select what prompts that they want to use, and what comprehension checks they want to use, sight words, everything is laid out for teachers. And so the expectation is that they have a guided reading lesson plan daily for their kids, they are taking a look at their students with running records each week, and then when they have the literacy team meetings with the literacy expert in their building, they're able to talk about kids, moving kids, and what difficulties they might be having in the classroom moving kids. And so obviously, our goal is always to be moving them forward. Uh huh, back to the presentation. But there is a whole plethora of resources for teachers, all in one place. They know that that's one stop shop. It's also available if they wanted to do it electronically, the forms are there and able to be filled out electronically for those that like to do the Google saving. Okay, and go to the next one. Okay, and one thing, Dr. Lethem had asked, you know, what are we doing to develop leaders? And that is our goal, is that we, once we step back, after we've done a lot of training, once we step back, do we have teachers that can talk that talk and help? Because we're always going to have turnover, we're always going to have new teachers, and we're always going to have students that struggle in the area of reading. And so we want to make sure that we are really building up our own from within. And so if you kind of look across, we're talking about how we're developing our own district leaders, our coordinators and coaches, but also our teachers and staff, and it's a very consistent model. If our teachers are expected to put it in place, our principals are getting that training, and our coaches are receiving that training, as well as our reading specialists. And so there's been some consistent models of training between the Mari Conference and the National Reading Recovery Conference, there's been consistent training across data teams and what the expectations are, and then the data, how to do the data team analysis in our literacy team meetings, but it is very consistent. And so that flow with the expectations with our curriculum and resources is there, and that we feel like that's going to really develop our leaders and open up more of our lab classrooms, so that we can have more opportunities to visit good sight-based reading instruction. Okay, we'll turn this back over to you, and talk about our new literacy card.
Okay, so. So as you can see, there are a lot of components to reading in terms of our staffing, and our resources, and our assessments, and just a lot of pieces to it. And the average person doesn't stay with us long enough to go through page after page after page of all the things that we're doing. We are more than happy to talk for an hour and 80 minutes about reading, because we can. But we know that the average person just, really the question is, so you want 100% of your kids reading on grade level, so how are you going to get it done? And there is, we just want you, we want the public to know that there is a lot behind it. But in order to try to condense our talking points, we've created a talking points card, if you will, and can you, will it bring it up for me? And can you kind of expand it a little bit? So underneath of this, this is a link that Communications Department, Ryan, has put together for us, and she did all the craft So, as you can see, there are a lot of components to reading in terms of our staffing, and our resources, and our assessments, and just a lot of pieces to it. And the average person doesn't stay with us long enough to go through page after page after page of all the things that we're doing. We are more than happy to talk for an hour and 80 minutes about reading, because we can. But we know that the average person just, really, the question is, so you want 100% of your kids reading on grade level, so how are you going to get it done? And there is, we just want you, we want the public to know that there is a lot behind it. But in order to try to condense our talking points, we've created a talking points card, if you will, and can you, will it bring it up for me? And can you kind of expand it a little bit? So, underneath of this, this is a link that Communications Department Ryan has put together for us, and she did all the crafty artwork, and she's getting this out through the communications page. But underneath of this page, if you just real quick scroll down, there are pages and pages of all the things that I've been talking about, the things that Lori just spoke to you about, those are all there. So, all of the detail of what we do are all there, but if you just want to get the down and dirty about what are you doing, we go back to the card, and what this card does is it pretty much outlines all of the pieces. And so, our goal, our mission possible, is 100% of our students reading at or above grade level. So, we have taken all of those, all of the stuff, and condensed it into four bullet points, those being that we believe that what we have is a rigorous, engaging instruction everywhere from lesson planning to assessment. We believe in a quality curriculum resource, we invest a lot of time and energy into designing that curriculum and aligning our resources. We develop very focused professional development, and we have a long list of PD, and Lori just spoke about some of that, what we do with principals and coaches, coordinators, and teachers. And then, we have a system in place for supporting struggling readers. We have a lot of things in place, like our reading specialists, and our intervention program, and our data cycles, all of those things are designed around supporting struggling readers. And so, we're able to take all of the stuff and combine it into, we believe, those four points, address all of the stuff that's behind it. And then, the bottom there kind of outlines by grade level. So, we believe that from birth to kindergarten, our focus is to help educate and provide the services for the foundational skills at home through our Parents' Teachers Program, through our parent engagement activities, and our educational processes with our parents. How are we educating our parents and supporting our parents for ensuring that they know what good literacy looks like in the home from birth until they, when they show up at our door? We want to help support that process, that time. Then from K-2, we have very targeted reading instruction, because we know that the average student reads somewhere between kindergarten, first, second grade, that's about when they're learning to read, and so, that's where our focus instruction is. And so, that component, it is the learning to read phase, you are learning to read. Then, when you get to third grade, if we got it right, then you're going into, you are reading to learn, you're now applying your reading skills into learning content. And so, our three through five is the growth and intervention phase, so growth, meaning that we're going to use your ability to read and grow you in terms of your content knowledge and academia, and then also, if you are struggling, that we provide an intervention program to support you. And then, 612, we provide you that support across content, and one of those ways is close reading, the close reading strategies that we use in the K-12 model. So, that is the reading to learn phase. So, we believe that this card encompasses all of the hard work that's happening out there every day in our classrooms, and so, we're using this as our talking point, and we would like it, if you're okay with it, to tomorrow, Ryan will begin pushing this out and putting together a message. Dr. Lithcom has already put together a message as to what we believe about reading and what this card, these pieces mean to us, and we'd like to begin communicating this out, and this become our focus and our talking point for the school district. Questions about that thinking, or the card, or any of the pieces that Lori spoke about?
Got one question. As far as Infinite Campus goes, I know we have parents that they just don't use it. So, what is the strategy to reach out to those parents that don't actually utilize Infinite Campus to see where their kids are at?
So, it depends on the grade. One of the things that we're doing, we've heard from parents that even when they, even when they come to school, and they come to parent-teacher conference, and they sit with the teacher, understanding what that means. So, when a teacher is to say to a parent, "Your child is at a 500 Lexile," what does that really mean? What does a 500 Lexile mean? And so, what we're trying to do is to create not just Infinite Campus, but also through I-Ready, the reporting system that comes through I-Ready, and through our report card, and to educate our teachers, that when you're sitting with a parent, we've got to get better about communicating what that means. What does a 500 mean? Where does that fall in the range of the reading scale from kindergarten to 12? And what does that mean for your child? What are their strengths and weaknesses? Because the assessments that we give now, literally, a teacher has the capacity to sit and explain to mom and dad exactly what they can and can't do, more than just, well, they're on grade level, they're not on grade level. We now have the capacity to say, here's what they can and can't do. They are struggling with vowels, they are struggling with this, they need morphoemetic awareness, they don't, they're moving on, they're struggling with fluency, we need to work on that, they're struggling with comprehension, they're doing well with comprehension. We have the capacity now to communicate that, and so, we're working on that through not just the reporting system, but also through our, through like teacher, parent-teacher, moms and dads are sitting there, how are we communicating that?
And what about those parents that don't come to parent-teacher's conference? Because we all know they're out there.
They are, and so, I can't tell you, I can't tell you that Infinite Campus is the system that's going to be a great communication tool, if that's what you're asking in terms of how.
No, I'm wanting to know, have we thought about how we're going to reach those parents that don't use Infinite Campus, or come to parent-teacher's conference, so that they know where their child is and try to get them involved?
Yeah, so, right now, as I said, the I-Ready reporting system allows us to generate very specific reports that we can give out to parents, so they can be sent home to a parent. Now, I'm not saying that that report, if you're the average parent, does that report isn't on the level that you will completely understand everything, I, some will and some won't, but I can tell you that it is far better than having nothing at all, or not communicating with the school, or not using Infinite Campus. At least you now have a piece of paper that says your child's strengths and weaknesses, here's what they can and can't do. And along with that, I would hope, an invitation to say, let's talk, let's talk by phone, call me, email. And we have a lot of teachers who are communicating home through email.
That's what I would do.
Dr. Lithcom, I think, had a story about a teacher that reached out to him about what his daughter was and wasn't doing, and he's talking, I'm not asking that you share it, but.
Were you not going to?
I only, I only say it to say that we have, we really do have a lot of teachers who are communicating through email, and hopefully answering the questions when a mom or dad wants to know, just specifically, just tell me what this means. Right now, I think that's probably the strongest piece that we have.
And along that line, this, I met this summer with each principal individually, and they all agreed that as far as one of our three priorities for our teachers to have a communication plan with all parents, all guardians, and along that part of it, just to help them take an active role, and what that looks like through Infinite Campus of helping with that, so just, hey, we've got to work much better, stronger together, and so, that's a part of that.
Brian, is there more, so, we get this out, and we're sharing it with parents, and parents are paying attention to it, is there information that they can find where, okay, I've got a K-2, what can, things that I could be doing at home? Or, hey, I've got a seventh grader that's struggling, what can I do?
Yeah, so, we don't have the home piece in terms of communication out to the home piece. They could go through those pages of stuff that he scrolled through, those probably would now be best for parents, because teachers would probably better understand those pieces.
Okay.
We still need to work with our schools, one of our goals this year is that, because all of our elementary schools are titled, that one of the required components is a parent engagement component. And so, what we're saying to them is that we have to engage, and there's dollars around engaging the parents, let's use that time, that opportunity, and those dollars to bring them in, and let's use that as an educational piece, and not only educate, but let's provide the resources they need. Let's create parents' resource centers, that they can come in, they can check out the resources, they can take them home, and we, and most of the buildings have a parent coordinator, parent involvement coordinator, that can help communicate that information out, so that's a piece we're working on. We're not there yet, but that's a piece we're going to develop this year.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions? One question I do, I've got for you, this is a great presentation, Dutch and Norbit, clearly, I mean, you guys have a lot of, there's a lot of different moving parts here, and there's a lot of work going on, and so, I appreciate you kind of going through the weeds a little bit for us this evening and sharing some of that. Have you all, in terms of, because I know you guys are looking at this on a daily basis and regularly, in terms of the different areas, you know, how you're evaluating that, do you, have you all benchmarked these things in terms of your, the goals that you all are looking to see, in terms of, you know, mid-year or end-of-year compared to last year, and things of that nature, in terms of, and kind of, how are we holding ourselves accountable in terms of moving these things forward?
Yeah, and I wish tonight I could tell you that we have that perfected, we don't. It's a piece we're working on. I believe that, unless I misunderstand what you're asking, that's a piece that's, really needs to happen through the walkthrough process, spending time in the classroom, providing the support to teachers, monitoring how it's going, in terms of, are we implementing these things? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah. So, because you can either monitor it through, let's just wait and see if kids do better, and then we can say, well, it must have worked, or not, or, right now, what we believe is, I went to a, I went to a conference here a couple weeks ago, and the person that was speaking, at the end of, all of the people got to stand up and speak about the stuff they're doing throughout districts, all the good practices, all that kind of stuff. At the end of the day, the message was this, because there were a lot of different things that districts are doing. The message was, it doesn't matter what you're doing, what matters is fidelity of implementation. Do the people believe it, and are they doing it? Because what they found is, the 90-90-90 school has found out that if you find something that everyone believes in, and you'll do it and do it well, then you'll succeed. So, right now, our goal is that when you look at all those things, how do we monitor and ensure that all those things are done with fidelity? Because I 100% believe that if we could support our staff, and they feel comfortable implementing those things with fidelity, that is what's going to get us the success that we want. So, right now, for us, it is, are we training the staff so they know what that quality looks like, and are we providing the support that they can implement it? And are our principals up to speed enough that they can go and observe, look for, and support that it's happening? That's the piece that we're trying to grow right now.
Great, thank you.
Along that line, if I could, real quick, you probably have heard then, that there's some legislation about dyslexia, and some requirements on our schools, and so, I want you to know that we are, we don't have that complete, but we are very close, and so, there are three components to that. One is that you conduct a, have a screening tool, that you screen K through three, that you provide professional development or training to your staff, so they can recognize or identify literacy, struggling students, struggling in literacy, and that you provide the reasonable support to help those students. So, we're working on those three components. We believe we have the professional development piece down, we believe that we have the majority of the screening pieces in place, we still have to identify a couple of them to wrap that up, and we absolutely believe that we have the classroom structures, those pieces we've been talking about tonight, to help support those kids once they're identified. So, just want you to know, we're working on it, and we're very close to having that completed, and once we do, I'll bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Good information. Next item of business, update from Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Hoffman.
I'm going to be brief, as Frank has a report a little bit later on approving the bus routes. I wanted to show you one thing real quick, as part of our boundary study, our demographer, our contract with the demographer is, once we had this all done, he was going to prepare a site for us that we could just enter your address, and it'll show you, it'll pick your location, it'll show you your elementary school you're in, your middle school you're in, and your high school. I'm a little bit scared about showing it, because it's still in beta form, and we have all the maps downloaded into our transportation software, Frank is working to make sure this site matches our transportation site, so this isn't up live yet, but we hope to have it up really soon. But, let's see, so, we're working on the colors, Larry doesn't like the colors. So, you see, it's very simple, it's all Google Maps, and so, you have elementary, middle, and high school, all the red dots are our school locations. So, I'm just going to put in our address here, just because that's one of them that was impacted by the boundary change. So, you see that it starts filling it in for you, so there's our locations, we can scroll in, see where it's at, so it's clearly in Fort Gordon, then you click on middle school, now, this is the Lewis and Clark side, and then, high school, this is going to be red.
Clarification, yeah.
That was the main color.
Red and blue is kind of what I wanted.
But, just a pretty simple site, but I think our parents are going to be really happy, I know our welcome seaters are going to like that a lot.
No doubt.
It's going to be a nice tool. Let's steal a little bit of Frank's thunder, I've told you before that we're going, we need to start routing buses for next year already, and so, I mentioned First Student, they have our new maps with all the correct boundaries in it, and their charge now is to route all of our students, that we've moved everybody forward a year, and just assuming they're going to be in that spot as we do a route study. And so, they're going to do three studies, they're going to say, what does it look, what do routes look like with our current bell structure? What do they look like if we, we really don't have the appropriate spread between our buildings as far as to do a tiered routing? For example, we just added a bus recently, because we had a bus that was scheduled to leave Thomas Jefferson, and they get out of school at 2:55, and it was to be at Morro Heights for a second route at 3:15, and it wasn't getting there until 3:30, 3:35, 3:40, and they, everybody was doing the very best they can, we just didn't have, it wasn't enough time, it just wasn't physically possible, so we had to add another bus. So, if you need enough time between your start and end times at your tiers to make that work, so, we're going to run it as it is currently, then we're going to say, all right, say, we keep the secondaries all as they are, and move all the elementaries back, and then, what do those routes look like? And then, we're going to flip-flop those and move all the elementaries forward, and all the secondaries with a later start time. So, we're working on that, say, we hope to have that information back, this, by the end of this week, we'll start evaluating it internally, and then, form a committee and start working on that as a larger group.
So, those, if we change times, that would go into effect in the fall?
Right.
Okay.
And then, if you think about it, next year, transportation, especially at the secondary level, is going to be quite a challenge, because we are going to run the whole district for Jefferson City High School, because we're still going to have seniors and juniors that aren't going to be able to attend Capital City High School, and then, we're going to run that whole other, the Capital City area again for Capital City High School. So, it, next year will be a challenge, and so, it'll cost us more to run buses next year, and that number will come back in, because we'll be able to reduce routes, but as we're doing that, now is the time to look at what would be the optimal way of doing things. So, just pushing that out there to keep you informed of where we're at.
Fun topics.
Yeah.
All easy ones. Thank you, Jason.
We give those to you. Thank you, period report, Jason. And next item of business is, we all know that MSBA Annual Conference was just this past weekend, and Lori and Lindsay, and Ken and myself had an opportunity to go down to Tantara and spend the weekend, or most of the weekend, down there, and they had quite a few breakout sessions and some good information to learn, and so, just, even with a reduced crowd this evening, wanted to give you all the opportunity to give Lori and Lindsay the floor tonight to ask you all to share what you've, what you learned, anything that kind of stood out, and that you took back that you think would be beneficial for the board and the district.
Well, I am glad that I made the decision to go and spend a weekend down there, just focusing on what we can approve upon in the district. It's pretty interesting to kind of see things that other districts are doing that we're doing, and hey, we're doing that really well, too, so that's awesome, and then, kind of to challenge ourselves and get some new ideas. So, there's several different breakout sessions. I attended several that were student involvement, parent involvement, and then actually reaching out and doing some alumni involvement. So, I'd like to visit Brian with you at some point, so we can kind of talk about some options for that. I think many of you have seen the post, Steve and I have shared about a food truck for the culinary program, so, just kind of thinking outside the box a little bit, on some things that, you know, we've got an awesome culinary program, and we'll have it, we could have a vehicle to share between two schools, and maybe something that could bring in tons of community involvement as well. So, something that I never thought of, I was absolutely fascinated, it was beautiful, and the food was awesome, and the kids were really excited about it, so that was cool. We got to see some neat speakers, so we'll be able to pass some of that information on. I know Jason was able to give a presentation, but next year, I would love to see more board involvement, faculty involvement, even be able to take some of our students down and recognize them. We're doing a lot of really neat things that we need to be able to share, so I'm excited to go back next year.
Thanks for those comments. Lori?
I'm just going to have to go with Lindsay said, and she pretty well covered most of it. One interesting session that I sat in on was homelessness and the difference, but there's a lot of grants out there, if there's some programs that we would like to sit down and evaluate, you know, what we do there, and so, my weekend was short, I moved my parents after 45 years, but other than that, it was a good weekend.
It was, and the same thing that you lady said, I mean, it's a good investment of time, you have, MSBA has always done a good job, attended, this is my fifth year going down there, and it's a, you know, it's a, it's a commitment to take your weekend to do that, but they do a nice job of offering lots of different breakout sessions, from finance to education to, or governance to operations, I mean, you name it, it's, as you remarked, there's a number of different things that you can pick from, in terms of strands, so.
Mental, some mental health ones, suicide prevention, I mean, there's a wide variety of different things you could go and learn about.
Absolutely. Ken, as you all know, is our liaison to MSBA, and so, he, he's kind of jumped into that role with both feet, and since he's not here to speak for himself, and I figure, tonight's a good opportunity, that if we need anybody assigned to a committee, then we can.
Ken, as you all know, is our liaison to MSBA, and so he's kind of jumped into that role with both feet. And since he's not here to speak for himself, then I figure tonight's a good opportunity that if we need anybody assigned to a committee, then we can go ahead and do that.
Sign the folks that aren't here.
That's right.
It's perfect.
But they had the delegate assembly, the MSBA delegate assembly, which they hold every year at the annual conference, which every district, every member district is asked to send a delegate. And since it's a member-owned association, they get the delegates together and basically review their advocacy positions, the plank positions of what MSBA takes a position on or advocates for on our behalf at the Capitol and around the state. And so they did that, and I just wanted to relay to you, Ken shared with me the results of, they took up quite a few things, but a couple of the ones that stood out that they, the delegates agreed to support collection, sales tax, internet sales at the state and local levels. They urged the general assembly, or they will urge the general assembly, to increase state funding to allow districts to provide free early childhood education. You've all known, I mean, there's a lot of information out there in the marketplace in terms of how effective early childhood education is. So nice to see MSBA taking a position on that. Supporting increase in the motor fuel tax in Missouri. And if you want to speak on that at all, I know there was some information that you had pulled together, you and Jason had pulled together, but so MSBA will take a formal position in support of that. And expansion of the A-plus scholarship program to pay for expenses associated with dual credit, being enrolled in high school and college at the same time. And then lastly, they took a formal position that, believing that school board elections should remain on municipal election day and remain nonpartisan. So if you remember that last legislative session, there was a bill that was filed to move school board elections to the November election date to have it occur then. And the thinking, at least most of the thinking that was publicized around that, and conversations were that the filer, I forget who it was, believed that that would generate greater interest, more voter turnout in terms of school board elections. But the majority of our delegates felt otherwise, and so MSBA will take a position. Our use that we need, our election days need to stay in April. So any questions on any of those, any follow-up?
All right. So thanks for that report, ladies. Good weekend, good information. You see, moving on, the next item of business, yeah?
Just a, one other part of the report that I failed to touch on is our ABLE tutors. We've doubled the number of ABLE tutors for sixth graders at the middle school level. And so we're at 80-plus tutors, so we are super excited about that. So if you know of anyone that would like to, it's, they just started here, so it's, let us know ASAP if you'd like to participate with that. But that's been a great thing. We've doubled that, so we're excited about our community partnering with us and being stronger together with regards to tutoring for our reading.
Yeah. No, thanks for sharing that. Yeah, good deal. So next item of business, you see there, I attend future dates. Won't go down through there with you, but they extend into the rest of the year. You see Coffee with Larry scheduled, regular board meeting scheduled out into January. We've got a board retreat. One item that, not on our agenda, but I would share with you, I just got an email earlier this afternoon from MSBA, Stephanie. Did they have Coffee with Larry at their seats? Okay. So just to let you all know, the John T. Belcher Scholarship that MSBA provides for seniors. So every region, there are 17 different regions of MSBA, and every year they make an annual award of $1,000 to a student in each region, in each one of the regions. And then each one of those award recipients will be, will compete for an additional $1,500 statewide award. And so I have had the fortunate opportunity to sit on the scoring panel for the last two years for this particular scholarship. And so when I saw this come out this year, I wanted to share it with Stephanie and Larry because I think it's a great opportunity. And certainly, you all know, there's plenty of JCPS students that I think would be great contenders for this. So if you all know of any interested students, certainly please share this, put that information out if you would. We'd love to see some Jeff City kids competing. Love to see some Jeff City students win that scholarship.
Great thing. And Gary will make sure that through our high school and our counselors, that they'll make that information available. So great thing.
Yep, thank you. Moving on to old business, first read of the 2019 to 2020 calendar. As you alluded to earlier.
You're right. So we've had some preliminary discussions about this at prior board meetings. Due to construction of Jefferson City High School, we're going to move the start of school back. Traditionally, we would have started around the 15th, would have been our traditional start date. We're moving that back to the 27th. That gives us another week and a half to get construction done at Jefferson City High School in the kitchen cafeteria in the commons area, or the gymnasium. A law changed in this last legislative session that went away from 100, the current law says we have to go 174 school days and meet a minimum of 1,044 hours. This year, we are attending our smallest calendar, calendar is 1,112. So we're well above the 1,044, and we do the minimum of 174 days. Next year, in 2019, 2020, the 174-day minimum goes away. We just have to meet 1,044 days. So we're well above that 1,044 hours, sorry.
Be a long year.
So we've created a calendar to meet that, and my mouse is not working. So with this calendar, we still get done by the 21st of May before the first state track meet and Memorial Day. We have a week of spring break here in March. We have Christmas break. We would traditionally, in the past few years, we have gone back, brought teachers back the day after the first for a professional development day, and then brought students back the next year. Obviously, that doesn't work with the way Christmas and New Year's is falling. So we took and placed the staff compensation days on the second and third, because those are contracted days for the staff doing parent-teacher conferences in the first semester and the second semester. Traditionally, they're around those days. We've placed them there to make sure they get compensated for those days. They're just not around where they traditionally would be. The day, the calendar still has Martin Luther King Day, President's Day. It has an early release for East, for Good Friday, the orange days on the Wednesdays. There are no full professional development days after we start school and the last day of school. Traditionally, we have three. We've moved those three days to before school. So normally, we would have three days of professional development for staff before school. We're now going to have six days of professional development leading up. So staff will report on the 19th and go those six days, then we'll have students. But we don't have the full professional development days within the calendar because there's just not time. So we have six early releases built in to get at least some professional development within the calendar. Because starting later, it didn't break well to have the semester end before Christmas. So we're recommending in this calendar that semester would end on the 10th. So that gives them a week of review and finishing up, and then they can have finals on the 9th and 10th. I think that's about it on the details of the calendar. I have met with the presidents of MSTA and MNEA. Quarterly, we meet with MSTA. They have a welfare committee that we meet with. And last week, we just happened to be meeting with them, so we went through that with them. They all understand the challenges of doing construction. They, I've heard no complaints about anything in this calendar. So there are only 172 school days in this calendar. So we'll have two fewer school days, and, but we'll still be well above the number of hours required to meet the minimum. So this is the first reading. Now, for the next month, we're going to try and find a way to get, to solicit input. Ryan and I have been talking about publishing. We have an email address where people can send, send their thoughts on it, but from staff's perspective, they, from everything we've gotten back there, they feel good about this.
You've shared with teachers and principals?
So principals, actually not the final calendar with principals. It was still when we were working on moving, pulling, and pushing, but generally, this concept, and all the principals were 100% in favor. And the only sharing of this with teachers has been at their leadership level. We will send this out, we'll put this on the website tomorrow with a draft watermark, and let everyone actually see all of the details now.
So and again, as you pointed out, just first reading, so they'll come back on the agenda in November for action at that point?
That's exactly right.
Okay. So then folks have, community members have an interest in speaking to that, and they can certainly do so at the November meeting, and that'll give teachers, community members, business owners, anybody, really anybody that's got an interest in this or wants to share their thoughts, and then they can do so between now and the regular meeting on November.
Correct.
It's a tighter window, as we know. It's, one of our goals is to be finished by Memorial Day, and that doesn't account for the weather makeup days, potentially. We can potentially use a couple of the days for weather makeup if it happens by a certain time and at enough advance notice. But if we did, and we understand the timeframe, that if we had to come back after Memorial Day, we could, but it's not ideal, and we recognize that.
And it's probably not likely. The new law says that we have to plan 36 hours of snow, of weather makeup, but it doesn't say you have to use them. It says you just have to meet the 1,044 hours. So if you miss a day for weather makeup, the law says you don't really have to make those up until you fall below 1,044. So it says you have to plan them. We have planned 36 hours, but we would, if we chose, we would have to miss eight school days of weather to fall below 1,044. So we have a lot of wiggle room.
Questions? Jason?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for work on that.
Yeah, appreciate that. Big task, but look forward to hearing more in the November meeting. Take it back up then.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Jason, again, busy guy tonight.
So in your packet, you have a proposed stipend schedule, and I tried to create, put a narrative of the process that we've gone through on how to get to this spot. Our current stipend schedule has been something that's made me cringe my entire tenure here. I don't, we, there's no defendable, there's no explanation on how any of the stipends were created, no rationale on why that's the amount for it. It's just, this is our stipend schedule. This is what, we've been compensating people to do this forever, so that's what it is. So we've been, something I've been wanting to do for a long time. I'm super excited about the help I got from our three activities directors. Aaron was great, just coming on board and seeing this as an issue, and he helped tackle it along with Chad and Robert, and then Gary Verslois and Shelby Scarborough. We kind of worked through this as a team, trying to come up with a salary, a stipend schedule, first, that we can defend. How did you come up with these numbers? Second, our current schedule doesn't really have a play, have a way to give raises. You work for three years, then you move over a step, then you work for seven more years, then you move over a step, but you're on that same step for all those seven years. And as we give raises, there really wasn't a mechanism to input increases into the stipend schedule. And then also placement on a schedule. Currently, as all of our assistant coaches, they all come in on step one, even if they were a head coach somewhere else for 10 years, if they come in as an assistant coach for us, they're on step one on our assistant schedule. We don't really feel like that's fair. So we've put together a schedule that has a lot of steps, similar to a teacher's schedule. It is, all of the columns are a percentage of our base. So you see the very far, column B is 21% of base, and then each year, there's a 0.7% increase, trying to get a similar number, close to a similar number to what's in, what happens with our teacher's salary schedule. And then we feel we need to follow our policy on placement on the salary schedule, just like we do teachers. So we have a board-approved policy that says if you have this many years of service, you come in on this step. So then the defendable part, we struggled. Do we do a point system? Do we go through each stipend and allocate value of points? And that was one method. But we thought the fairest way was to take an approach similar to what we do with our pay for all the other areas, is we want to have the best compensation package in central Missouri. So we picked the five school districts in central Missouri that had the best stipend schedules, and they were Columbia, Fulton, Camdenton, Sedalia, and Waynesville. So we took those five, we got their stipend schedules, and we laid them out and did a comparison. And it was actually Aaron's idea that he feels like we need to have the best head coaches and head sponsors, and then they can have assistants, but they would be the ones driving the show. So he wanted to make sure our stipends for our head coaches and sponsors was the highest, and then we needed to be competitive on assistants. So we took all of the head coaching and sponsor stipends, and we said we wanted to be, we wanted to find the highest of those five and pay 5% more. And then for the assistants, we took the average of the five, and we said 10% more than the average. And then we took that number and found a place on this schedule that would fit. And so that's how we came up with the columns. And at the bottom of the sheet, you can see who falls in each category. So the first column was football head coach and basketball head coach. They were 21% of the base and going all the way down that column. But we found most of the other schools paid that other grouping of head coaches all very similarly, if not the same. So all of those other head coaches, wrestling, track, volleyball, soccer, baseball, softball, they all fall in that category across country. We don't have anybody in the next two. Need to back up again. One of our other goals was we wanted all Misha sports and activities. So the process that we went through worked great for athletics, because everybody has head coaches and assistant coaches, and basketball is the same length of season for all five. What we found in the other Misha, non-athletics, they were different and not, they were just all over the board. Band, choir, orchestra, speech and debate, and scotterball. They were all over the board. Part of it is, what priority do these districts put on that program versus others? What are the expectations? For example, theater, we were looking at all activities, but theater wasn't Misha. But theater ranged in that five. One district paid like $1,400 for theater, and one paid $9,000 for theater. And so it was, obviously, they put a big emphasis in theater in that district, and the other one didn't. And I think ours is around $4,000. So we're not meeting our goal. We're tonight asking you for approval, this is only athletic Misha. We're still going to work on the rest of the mission, the rest of the activities, and we'll continue to bring those to you. The reason for pushing for athletics at this time is we're going, it's time for us to start hiring coaches for Capital City High School, and we don't want to use a broken old system to hire new people. We want to say, here's our system, and here's what we're going to do going forward. If you look on the second page, second, third page, I gave a comparison of what our current schedule looks like and others, and there are a few spots where we've been overpaying compared to the others. So the new schedule will have a lower amount. If anyone, if anyone would make less on the new schedule, we're certainly going to grandfather them in on the old schedule. We've hired them in under this. We, it wouldn't be fair to say, no, now you're going to make less. So we'll work through that. We also need to work through a process on how to place all of our current staff on this new schedule. When we hire new staff, it's going to be very easy. That's going to be simple. But the activities directors have a plan. They're going to send out a Google form, get all of their, have them fill out all their coaching and sponsor background, so that we'll, and we'll have to go through each of them individually and be fair, and place them on this schedule. We met with the head coaches this morning. We thought we needed to say, here's what we're proposing. We don't want you to read about this in the paper tomorrow. So we met with them, and... So we met with them, and they were all very supportive of what we're doing, no real concerns. But I did tell them that, you know, this is what we're doing for next year. So we have time to fix it if something isn't right. But we needed a structure on how to move forward for Capital City. So this would be the recommendation from the group that I mentioned earlier.
So for school years starting in the fall, not sports that start in the spring?
That's exactly correct. This is for sports fall of 2019 going forward.
And I might just touch on, there can, user views or opinion about how can you, why is football or basketball at a higher level than?
Soccer.
Soccer, or tennis, or golf. You know, it's a, you look what others are paying, you look at the time requirement, you can look at the expectations. I've been a head high school golf coach, and I've been a head high school football coach. I know the responsibilities were much greater. And so that's one reason contributing, that as we look at all of them, it's not, we're just setting the bar on that. But as far as how it compares, it's not that the girls' tennis is not important. It's just that there are, you know, what are the other schools paying in that? While also understanding the time commitment and the expectation, there's less. There's a lot of variables on that I thought I should touch on.
Another nice thing about this is, once we have a process in place, we now can evaluate this every three years, every five years, whatever we want to do to make sure we're still in line. I don't think it's something I want to do every year, but it's
Are you sure?
Certainly something we can do periodically, just to make sure we haven't gotten out of whack somewhere.
And this has been going a two or three years, because I know, or three or four, maybe prior to my, but I remember having a meeting here right when I got here, and with coaches and the athletic directors and so forth. So I appreciate all your work. It's not just, in the last couple of months, I decided to put something together.
Exactly.
Work in progress.
Move to approve. Second.
If you are, I think, Lindsey, Lori, discuss.
Thanks for putting it together. It makes, it's easy to understand, it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Jason, you have a question, second on the floor. Have a further discussion. All in favor of approving the staffing schedule as proposed? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Good. Schedule is approved. Thanks, Jason. Cross your eyes.
I think he just turned the heat on, so we didn't have to talk that long.
We'll turn, they'll turn the heat up on you.
Hey, Frank?
I hope not. Good evening.
Welcome.
Bottom one? All right, some great stuff here presented tonight. One of the things that I didn't put on here that I wanted to put out there is that first student keeps track of bus tickets, so to speak, of kids on the bus. One of the things that I was privy to was the results of where we are this year compared to last year. During the summer, I presented a program that I was, told you that I was going to present to them on student management, and not only at the elementary level, but at the secondary level. And we're 32% down on bus tickets this year compared to last year. I was thinking, how great of a teacher you are. And then I got to hear about reading and literacy, these kids, what they're doing. And somebody told me one time, we teach our kids to read better. It'll help a lot with the discipline issues that we have, and the behavioral issues that we have. And that was a study that you shared with me, and that's just stuck with me. And then tonight, when I hear about the great things that Brian and his crew are doing, and Gary and Lori, I'm thinking, okay, you just presented a bunch of material, and these guys are getting it. So I just wanted to share that. I didn't put that up there, but, and I appreciate that, because I think it's working. Not only just training our drivers a little bit, but training our kids and teaching them how to read.
The slides look good, Frank.
Anyway, so let's roll through this. These are just our current stats right now. 225 square miles, serving 18 buildings, 68 routes, nearly 1 million miles driven a year. The 50, 61 students transported daily, that was based on our last count at the February of last year. Right now, the on-time performance, 97.85% on-time performance. That's two first-student schedule. So at the school, you know, their schedule would be at Thomas Jefferson at 7:30 to 7:40. 97.85% of the time throughout the district, they're making their schedule. 99.8%, they're making two bell schedule, meaning that they're getting their ahead of bell schedule. .2%, you know, that's huge. And it is just mainly because of our first two and three days of school, just getting to those second-tier schools. And this is a morning bell schedule. There is no afternoon OTP. This is mornings. But 99.8, right now, Brandon assures me, within the last four weeks of doing it, it's been 100% going. This is something that they look at every day. And unless a bus breaks down, something dramatic in the morning as far as them getting to school, they've made it before the bell anyways. But 97.8 on their schedule. And he asked me to throw in, they're now hiring school bus drivers. So they are always hiring.
Larry's going to apply for the job.
There's maps. Larry likes the colors, I guess, so I kind of cut the same colors. That's our district, all the way over to Osage City, Tebets, down south, all the way east, and all the way up in Callaway County, north up by, pretty close to New Bloomfield. We're just a few miles south of New Bloomfield city limits. So it's a huge, huge district. Projection and challenges. I wouldn't lie to you to say that eight years ago, I came here and begged Jason. I said, please, let's change these bell times, please. Seven years ago, I asked him, I said, Jason, can we change? Six years, I kind of just set it passing, and then after that, I've given up. And then tonight, here we are again. And I'm saying that I don't believe that it would be possible to run a second high school and without adding significant number of routes. So a projected number of routes, those are one of the things that we're working on right now, especially for this next year, as he explained with the current high school serving the whole district, and then Capital City serving just its own, its area itself. So two-phase routing, we're looking at this next year. And then again, we'll put together another study and look at it for 2021, breaking out the two high schools. And it'd be much easier then, we'll deplete a lot of routes, so based on what we should be doing this next year. Current bell time conflict, May, I put May, will increase number of routes needed. The three scenario planning, he explained it as-is, our current bells. What are we doing now? Can we do that with what we did? We can do it, but physically responsible? No, I mean, there's better ways of doing it. And the other two would be, fall into that category. So with that, I just wish to present, I guess, the 18, 19 bus routes for your approval and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Frank. Good information. For a motion to approve.
So we're approving?
You have a list.
Yeah, we're approving the 18, 19.
Correct, correct. Current one's right now.
It could change if we get the money back and decide.
In February, we'll come back and present it again. If there is any changes, we'll show them to you at that time.
So this bus route includes, if there's no bell change?
No, this is for this year.
This is for this year.
Oh, 18, 19.
Right now, this is current year.
By law, you approved these twice. So we've already been running them, and now you're going to approve them.
I was going to say, good job.
Pretty much.
What happens if it's like, we're three months in? Why don't we approve it?
I don't know. And it seems, you know, here we are, two and a half months or whatever, at school. However, when we start school, routes have changed significantly since August. One, just because of the way our enrollment, kids enroll late, we have overcrowded buses, we added a route. We just added a route probably two weeks ago for Thorboard, or, I'm sorry, More Heights, because of the time that it couldn't keep, we wanted it to be on time, and so.
Frank, I thought we fixed stuff and never changed it.
I wished it was that easy. It's not that easy.
I got Laura like, a second. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the bus route? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank.
All right. 18, 19 staffing report. Mrs. Scarborough.
Good evening. I am happy to present to you our staffing update. I'm going to do two things. One is to give you the current reality of what our staff makeup is, but then to also bring to light some future struggles that I anticipate every district in the United States is going to have with a decline in the number of people entering the field of education. So in our office, we meet every week, and we focus on the mission of making sure everyone knows the important job that we have of attracting, hiring, developing, and retaining all the employees within our school district. So everyone that is dispatched to whatever building they work in starts in our office. And so we take this role very seriously, and want to make sure that we, once we hire people, that we support them from everything, from their insurance benefits, to making sure they have a nice onboarding process, so they feel that they're valued and appreciated, and we're happy that they're here. So this year, we currently have 1,472 employees. That includes full-time and part-time. And that is as of last Thursday, when we ran those numbers. This is the student-staff demographic comparison. And this is very important, because it's, we strive to have a staff population that mirrors our student population. And unfortunately, when we talk about supply and demand, the supply isn't there for us to work towards mirroring the population. But we, as I'll explain throughout the presentation, is what we are doing to try to increase our, the comparison, so that it truly is reflective of our student population. So that's just a breakdown. You can see the different percentages of the different categories. And then also is the student-staff gender comparison. So you see, we have 51.3% male student population, and only 24% male teachers. And so there's a discrepancy there, that we also have a job that we need to do to recruit male teachers, so that it also mirrors our student population. Turnover rates, and this is actually something that we are proud of. If you see, in 16, 17, our turnover rate of certified staff was 8.3%. Last year, it was 4.5%. And we'd like to attribute that to all of the different pieces that we have in place, from professional development to supporting our teachers, in all sorts of ways, so that they feel that they're valued and want to work. And same with our non-certified staff, went from 8.7% to 6.5%. So we're hoping by making sure we have clear and direct job descriptions, so people know what their jobs are supposed to, what they're supposed to do in their jobs, and then give them support so that they can be successful. So from July 1st of 2017 to September 30th of this year, we hired 383 new employees. And that's in all categories across the board.
Full and part-time?
Full and part-time, yes. So this information might be a little confusing, but we had 196 job postings, and we had 3,101 total applicants. So let me explain this a little bit. On our job postings, some of them are global postings. So if we had elementary teacher, we had a paraprofessional, custodian, nutrition services worker, those are one posting. So it may serve a bunch of different purposes, and we may hire 20 different paraprofessionals, but it's only one job posting. So that's why there's such a huge difference between the job posting and the number of applicants. And with the number of applicants, we may have some people that apply for two, three, four, or five jobs, and we include all of that. Because I think it's important to know how many people are applying for all of our jobs. Even if it's one person that's applying for multiple, it's an important statistic that we need to look at. So in talking about our applicants, so I, don't panic me with these numbers. There's really a method to my madness. So it's the category, the number that we had, and then the percentage of the total amount of the 3,101. So the gender, for females, we had 2,028 applicants, and so that's made up 65% of our total applicant pool. We had 186, which ended up being about 6%, the decline to identify if they were male or female. And then the males, we had 887 applicants, which made up 29% of our total applicant pool. So breaking that down, I know this is hard to see, and I apologize, but I did the same breakdown, where you would have the total number of people that applied, followed by the percentage. So it shows you, if you look at white, African-American, American Indian, Asian, Pacific Islander, and decline to identify. So the decline to identify, it is not mandatory that they indicate their race on our application. We don't have to ask that information. And so what they did offer us is what we have reflected in this information. So 73% were hired that were white, 7% African-American, 1% American Indian. We had three Asians that we have, that showed up 0% when you do the big scale, Pacific Islander, we had zero. And then decline to identify was 19%. So that kind of shows you the comparison of the percentages that applied, and then the percentages that we actually hired. So of our applicants, we did the top 10 of the institutions that they came from, where they got their degrees. And so the top five, William Woods, Mizzou, Lincoln University, Columbia College, and the UCM. And so we've worked strategically with all of the universities listed up there on their career fairs, working with the College of Education. And so continuing those partnerships are obviously important to us, especially since we know that those are the institutions that are feeding our school district, and we want to continue to foster that. So with our teachers, in addition to what universities they came from, I think it's important to note the number of our teachers that have advanced degrees. So this is master's degrees, specialist degrees, or hours beyond a master's degree, 419 teachers. And then six of our teachers have their doctorate degree. So key statistics, which I think is important. I'd like to highlight the student-to-teacher ratio for our district. This is over a five-year span, so it kind of shows you the commitment that we have had as a district to keep that ratio low, because we find that the lower the student-to-teacher ratio, the more positive impact that it has on student learning. Those are just a variety of statistics that show our average enrollment over a five-year period, the number of FTEs that we've had, average salary, student per FTE, average years of experience, which is pretty consistent across the board, the number of teachers that we have. And I'd like to highlight for 2018, the jump in teachers, because we've added some positions that are key support positions that are, I think, are reflective of our commitment to our reading initiative and identifying some of the needs that our students have, and putting people in place to support them. So this is taking the same information about the number of FTEs per student, or teacher-student ratio. So the blue line across the top is the actual student-to-teacher ratio, and then the orange columns, the numbers, you kind of have to turn your head. But it is the full-time equivalency of what we have employed. So it's basically showing the same thing, just kind of showing you the trends, that that commitment is there to continue to hire people. And the line of the student-to-teacher ratio goes down, which is showing our commitment to having small class sizes across the board. This is also a good statistic, and this was actually pulled at the end of last year. So it shows you the ranges of teacher experience. So it's everything from up to one year, which is the far-left column, to 30 or more years, which is the far-right column. So most of our teachers fall in the five-to-10-year range, and that kind of varies. Some of the buildings may be heavier on the 10-to-20-year range. Some are heavier, new teachers. But across the board, that's kind of how it outlines when all the buildings are averaged together. So how does our district compare to the state of Missouri? So when we talk about the students per teacher, or the students to classroom teacher, and the difference there would be, if we have instructional coaches or reading interventionists, support people in our buildings, that's where, they're still classified as teachers. And so that's where the students per teacher number is, and then students to classroom teacher, and then students to administrator. So the top section is Missouri, underneath that is Jefferson City. And then below that shows you the average teacher salary, average administrator salary, average years of experience, and then the number of teachers with a master's degree or higher. So we're right in line with the state average, which is encouraged. So the Missouri teacher, and this is some breakdown that actually Desi has this information. So you, when you look at how we compare with the state of Missouri, we have 29% males. I take that back. Yeah, we do. No, that was applicants, never mind. We have 24% males and 76% females. We have 92% white and 4.6% African-American. And our other population is a little bit higher than that in Missouri. And then that kind of shows you the breakdown of the years of experience as it compares to the chart that I just showed you with Jefferson City. So you see how the comparison is with the average in Missouri. And then the average teaching salary, red is Jefferson City, blue is the state average. So we're right in line with the state average. So staff turnover, this is obviously important, because we have, across the state of Missouri, a large number of people that are anticipating retirement in the next few years. This, there is some method to all of these lines. If you look at the solid red line, that is the average turnover in the state of Missouri. There's a faint green line that's underneath that, which happens to be Jefferson City. And I think it's encouraging for us to see that we follow the same trend. Yep, we follow the same trend. the same trend, and we are a lot better off in turnover statistics than some of the districts in this area. So you see, some of them are pretty drastic in their turnover statistics, but we follow the same trend and we're below the state average, which is, which I feel is encouraging for our district. So specifically, what are our turnover statistics? So the dark blue at the top is, teachers have left for another position in another district. So maybe we had a teacher that went to be an administrator in another district. The orange is another position in the same district. So again, maybe you had a teacher that moved into an instructional coach position, or they moved into administrative position, and that shows you the number of teachers that stayed in our district, just in a different position. The red, which is the largest, is not a teacher in Missouri. So this could account for someone moving out of state, someone leaving the field of education, someone retiring. And then the teal color is a teacher in another district. So over the five-year period, we gather some of the information, what districts are our teachers going to? So these are the top 10 districts over a five-year period where our teachers have gone. The top one is Columbia, so over a five-year period, 18 teachers have left Jefferson City and gone to Columbia. Southern Boone was next, that had eight over a five-year period, and then Blair Oaks had six over a five-year period. So that kind of shows you a breakdown on where people are going, because I think sometimes there's a perception that we're a training ground for other districts, and we're losing a bunch of teachers. But really, those statistics show you that it may not be as big of a concern as we had thought. So in talking about teachers leaving, there's a global teacher shortage that we have to be mindful of. And so, I want to share with you some of the things that we're putting in place, so that we can stay ahead of this crisis for education. In 1975, 22% of all students in college were majoring in education. In 2015, it was down to 10, and a recent poll of students going to college found that only 4.6 wanted to major in education. So taking that information, the trends are frightening, because the number of students that are enrolled in K-12 schools is drastically increasing, where the number of students enrolling in departments of, or colleges of education is drastically declining. So that huge discrepancy is putting uncertified teachers in classrooms, or leaving classroom teaching positions unfilled, and so they're having to use substitutes, or using emergency certification routes to put people in classrooms. So this chart will show you that in 2018, over 100,000 classrooms are either not filled with certified teachers, or they have people that are in emergency certification track. So they're not certified, which is scary, but if you look at how those lines keep moving in opposite directions, we're headed for a crisis if we don't start finding ways to get people to want to become teachers. So it's important to understand why teachers are leaving the profession, which may be the same reason why some are not even entering the profession. Dissatisfaction was number one, family and personal reasons, retirement to pursue another job, and financial reasons. And so those were, that was just from the National Center for Education Statistics that basically is asking people, as they leave, "Why are you leaving?" So what are we doing about it in our district? So we are embracing our data. So looking at all of the trends that take place within our district, within the surrounding districts, looking at our hiring practices, looking at our applicants, and how, how we can adjust what we're doing to meet the demands of our data. We're focusing on climate and culture. We want this to be a place where people want to work. And so, if we can make people want to be here, then we're, we are selling a product that we know that people want. Developing our own people, giving people a reason to stay here. We want to do the little things great, so that people want to stay here, not to be attracted to go to another district. So what do we do differently here that make people want to stay here? Enhancing our college and university partnerships. They're having the same struggles we are by getting students to come to their universities, and then getting their students to enroll in their college of education programs. So they have the same struggles. So Wednesday, I'm actually meeting with MU representatives, Thursday, I'm meeting with the instructors through the College of Ed at Lincoln, so that we can come up with some creative ways to think outside of the box to help each other. Because that's the only way we're going to be able to fight this beast, is if we join forces and do it together. Supporting alternative routes to certification. We're lucky in Missouri that they do recognize some alternative ways to become certified. So if you have a college degree, you can take the ABCTE exam, working on provisional certifications, so you can work towards an area that you want to become certified in. So working with Desi and continue to encourage them to honor these alternative routes, that, when we go the alternative routes, and sometimes they miss that practical application piece by being in the classroom as a pre-service teacher, then we know when they, if we hire a teacher that way, that we need to do a lot of professional development to help close that gap that they might have missed, but we're committed to doing that. If they're good people that want to work here, that we want to be with our students, then we're going to make sure we do our part to support them. And then partnering with business and community leaders, not only do we want them to come work here, we want them to come live in Jefferson City. So if it's a good place for them to live and work, then chances are they're going to stay. So this isn't something that we can just do by ourselves as a school district, we have to work with our entire community to make sure that this is a place where people want to be. And then building and community, communicating our brand. What is it that sets Jefferson City Public Schools apart from everyone else? And so, while working towards becoming a premier school district, what are those things that we do differently? And what are we doing that's outside of the box that sets us apart? So it's a huge effort from all of us working together, but figuring out what is our brand, and then communicating it. So when we talk about our data, and this takes all of us, but you saw the work that Jason has done with our stipends. So looking at compensation studies, how do we compare with all the districts around us? What are the compensation studies of non-teaching jobs? So if we have, we had tech positions, so Joe did a bunch of work on comparing comparable positions within our district with those with the state or outside of education. How do they compare with what we're offering? Satisfaction surveys, we want input, we need to know. What we don't know, we don't know, and so we want to be able to inform us of what are the issues, what are the celebrations, what are the concerns, and that we can start acting upon those. Trends in applicants, again, we want to see where are our applicants coming from, and how can we continue that pipeline? How can we expand our pipeline? And looking at all of those, and that's what we do on a frequent basis. And exit surveys, trying to really get that input from people. What made you stay your entire career at Jefferson City? Or why are you leaving after two years? And really getting that perspective from them, so we, we can make adjustments along the way to, again, make sure that we're retaining our people. So growing and developing our own to recruit, hire, and retain. So we've talked about this before, about growing, growing your own programs. And rather than making one just cookie-cutter approach to this, we're looking at this globally. How can we attract high school students to want to become teachers? How can we work with those that are in the college of education to encourage them to stay in the college of education? If we have students that think, "Oh, I want to be a teacher," and then they have a bad experience doing an observation and decide they no longer want to be a teacher, then we haven't done our part. So we have a commitment to those, those teachers as well. Once we get student teachers, our objective is to make sure they fall in love with that school, they have support from their teachers that they work with, they love the administrator and they want to stay on. We were blessed, we had a fantastic batch of student teachers that we actually hired this year for that very reason. We put them in places where they could be successful, they felt supported, and they wanted to stay here. Our non-certified employees, working with those that may have a desire, they may have a degree, they may be working as a paraprofessional, and they just don't know what those next steps are to become a classroom teacher. It's up to us to help them find those ways that they can become certified, to hopefully become a teacher. And then those that want to be aspiring administrators. Our learning team has, has identified people that are interested in becoming administrators and putting them in a program that can help support them and train them up, so that when the time comes, they're ready. And then our aspiring supervisors and managers, so many times we focus on our certified staff, but I feel it's important to focus on our support staff, putting people in place where they can expand their own career and advance, and we want to make sure we set them up for success. So instead of just having a grow-your-own, we're going to find different ways, we're trying to do it from a big picture, because it impacts all of our employees, to make sure we identify those people that we want to advance and hopefully retain. So recruiting, I appreciated what you said Lindsay, about at the MSBA conference, talking about our district, having our students talk about it, our teachers talk about it, our board talk about it. This is up to all of us. Yes, we take this very serious through our office and put avenues in place where we can recruit, but it's everybody. What is it about our district that we want to share with others to make them want to be a part of what we have? And so that's important, that we identify those things that, that we do, that we want to share with others and make sure we share. Because if we're not telling our story, someone else is, and we can't guarantee what that story is. So we want to make sure that we are putting that out there and making people want to come, to come work for us. So as Jason mentioned, we're starting this process that actually started last spring. Gary and Bob James and Ben Meldrum and I sat down and started our strategic plan on what it was going to look like to transition staff to two high schools. And it's, it's worked well, we've been transparent with the staff, we've made ourselves available to ask, or answer any questions that they have. And so we focused on some things that I think is important for all of you to be aware as well, is the things that are driving our decisions about who is placed where and when they are placed there, is obviously student enrollment, student course request, teachers, areas of certification. We want to decrease ricochet, so we don't want to have to have someone start at Capital City, go back to Jefferson City High School, come back to Capital City. So we're going to try to reduce that, because not only is that stressful for the teachers, but it's also stressful for our students. And then obviously, our coaching and sponsor positions are going to cause some fluctuation in staff as well. So we are getting a jumpstart on hiring head coaches for our fall sports, as well as cheer, dance, orchestra choir and band. So we are posting those October 22nd to start getting those head coaches in place, so then that will also help us determine where some of our teaching staff will fall as well. So again, we're being transparent about this, so anytime you have questions or any concerns about this, then please reach out to Gary or myself, or Ben and Bob, and we'll be glad to talk you through what we're doing. And encourage people to apply. So that's what it looks like on our website. If you go to employment opportunities, you'll see that little box right there, and you click there, opportunity to apply. So retention of our staff, as we already mentioned, we are trying to build the capacity of all of our employees. Building our teacher leaders, supporting our principals, so that they become human capital leaders. We want to empower them, so that they're also supporting their leaders within their building. Studying data trends, just like I talked about, it's important for us to know what's going on in the world around us and how we compare. Our growth model evaluation, we all can get better in everything that we do. So identifying where are our growth opportunities for all of us, and what are we doing to continue to grow? Because when we identify those opportunities, we are supported in those opportunities, then we obviously become better at what we do. And then training hiring managers on effective recruiting and interviewing. So how can we identify the very best? We have a short window when we have positions open, someone's resume looks good, but what else do we have to do in order to recruit good people and make sure that when we interview, that we are asking the right questions to get the right people on board? And then it's, one of the things that we start, did in, starting in September, is the Panorama Education Company, we partnered with them as an outside vendor to do a climate and culture survey for our district. And so, once we get that data, it will be broken down by building, and then we'll also have comprehensive district data, which I think is going to help us a lot on our climate and culture, and then we can put plans in place to continue to improve and enhance that. So our focus for 2018 is obviously to have happy, engaged, productive, and rewarded employees. So looking at our exit interview information, what is it, again, that kept someone here for their entire career, or what caused someone to leave after just a couple of years? Looking at our new hires, what was your experience like when you started? How can we help you? What do you feel you're lacking? What could we have done differently to help your onboarding become better? Because once we get them here, we want them to stay, and we want to support them. Looking at our turnover rates, obviously, we want to keep our people, and so we want to continue to monitor that. We also are going to monitor absenteeism, to see if there's a trend in staff missing work, and why they might be missing work. Obviously, we have a lot of long-term leaves going on right now, because we have lots of new babies that have been born in our district. But that isn't the kind of information we're tracking. We're just tracking it out globally to see why would people want to miss work? And then the results from our survey, as I mentioned, is going to help us look at our climate and culture and continue to find ways to enhance that to support our employees. So, that's a lot of information.
The climate, this is a really good presentation. Why, just before, we were talking about that Panorama survey, is that something that you do yearly, or we've just done it once?
No, this is something that Brenda Hatfield and I met with this company, was it in June or July?
She's been cast on me the whole time.
Yes, the whole time she's been here. So we thought, "What the heck, we'll just have you come meet with us." And so, we were intrigued by it, because it's all research-based, and it's all about K-12 education. Because a lot of times, you'll have outside vendors wanting to come in and do surveys, but this is solely focused on K-12 education. So it was fascinating. And so, they've been great to work with, and so they are taking care of putting all the data together, and then they'll ship us, back to us when they have it all put together.
Will it be any? The question was, will it be any?
We can, we can, we bought a one-year subscription, so we can actually, the exciting part for us is that we only use part of their tools. We can actually, I'll pick on Todd Schalls. If Todd Schalls wants to look at a particular facet in his building, we can actually do a survey just for Callaway Hills on another set of things. And we've talked to the principals about that. We wanted to convert through the first big survey, but we actually have a subscription to all of their tools, and we're in here. So we're pretty excited about it. We had a 75% response rate from staff, which we're very excited about. They told we expect 40. I told them 65, and we ended up, thanks to Larry, at 75.
I skipped out on that one.
So we're excited to get that.
So we're pretty excited about that.
So any questions?
Other questions?
Great presentation.
Awesome, thank you, yes.
Great stuff.
Shelby, could you go back, one thing I, I do think, it's important we draw attention to, could you go back to the slide that compares us to the state average in terms of compensation?
Sure.
Because, you know, that's, that's an area that, that we, as board members, hear an awful lot about, and, and for good reason. I mean, the patrons want to make sure that districts are run.
Do you want?
Yep. No?
Do you want that one?
Well, this is important to, I, I think this one and then the other one that you had, it was more of a spreadsheet view. Yeah. And, you know, to me, this, like I said, these are important things to, to talk about and to, and to monitor. I'm glad you guys are clearly doing that. And it also goes to a point that you made earlier about, if we don't tell our own story, then somebody else is. And that may or may not be accurate, it may not be, may or may not be correct.
So I will say that this is 2017 data. So when we have 2018, we did have a significant raise that I think is going to be reflective in the statistics, because overall, I don't think across the board was it the same. So I think we'll hopefully be above the state average as we go through that.
Sure. No, thank you. I, like I said, I appreciate that, and it's, it's just, it's, it's an area that's, it's important that we track, we hear about it a lot, but we appreciate the efforts that you put into those.